Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to a order at 6:30. All please rise. Remain standing, please, for moment of silence for our first responders and those deployed. Thank you. We have, I want to remind everyone, we are being recorded, it'll be on YouTube and on Baker's House, and we have two members attending, Mayor Butcher and Councilman Rysdorf are attending by phone. So I'll open it up for public comment. Or is that your? I want you guys back.
Young boys on the fire truck didn't need the old guy that time. Just to give you the chief's report for the month of February, we had fourteen calls in the borough, eight calls in the township, zero dollars firewalls. Our total calls for February is thirty-four. Whereas makes me feel pretty good. Incident staffing hours was ninety-one, and the biggest one is their incident response time is a minute and forty-seven seconds in the borough from the time of dispatch to time we arrived. That number will never stay that low, but most of the time, people are just hoping to get out the doors in two minutes, and we're at your doorstep in a minute and forty-seven seconds. So if we can keep these people around the firehouse, if you know anybody that's interested in being a firefighter, send them my way, I greatly appreciate it. We have some other hours we just want to let you know about. In-station train hours was forty. Staffing amongst our command staff was sixty-two hours for the month. Apparatus technician hours was sixteen. If somebody comes in and wrenches on our equipment for free, it doesn't cost anybody any money. And to that, they even brought their own parts in this last time, so we didn't pay for parts or labor. Noteworthy events, I got thirty-five smoke detectors which will be put on the fire apparatus in case we show up on a call or on the ambulance, we show up on a call and somebody doesn't have a working smoke detector, we're gonna make sure the ambulance work and smoke detector. Free charge. That's all I have for you. I hope that was brief, but.
That's great, we really appreciate you inputting.
Thank you all very much. I'm gonna go, you don't mind over here, stand by my station while they're on Fire Baltimore County. I hope you all have a great night, thank you.
Thank you so much. Next up would be Ashley Zimmerman and Rob Exer.
Hi, everyone. I think I've met most of you. I'm Ashley, I'm with Northern Central, and I'm the executive director. So last, I think it was almost a full year ago, we came and made a presentation about the amusement tax. So I just wanted to give you an update on what we have going on. So here is a little handout on kind of our twenty-twenty-three year that we had. So we had our best year ever, and I'm so pleased to share that. We had over twenty-one thousand riders, and I think you'll see that in the amusement tax that we paid, which was over thirty thousand dollars this past year. Our mission is economic development, so we did a lot of marketing outside of the York County area. Sixty-two percent of those riders came from outside of York County, which is fabulous, because that means that those people are spending their money specifically in the New Freedom community. We celebrated our tenth anniversary this past year, which was very exciting. We had over eight hundred people there for the weekend, and then we did it again in October, which how we weekend went well over another thousand people that came through. We did get our liquor license. We're only allowed to use it when the train is running, so we've been pretty responsible with that. And then we also brought in two new pieces of rolling stock, which I'm sure you've all seen on the track. So that was very exciting, because that allows us to kind of really expand our product offering across the board. So compared to twenty-twenty-two, our ridership was up twenty-four percent, which is really another five thousand riders. So it was a really big year for us, and we're very grateful for that. So with that being said, we did around thirty thousand dollars for the amusement tax. When we came last year, we did request fifty percent of it back as a donation to the organization. So that's around fifteen thousand dollars that we would love to see come back to the organization. What we would like to do with those funds is, and if you flip to the back, which you already jumped ahead, that's okay. So five percent would be, again, to fund the Freedom Fest train rides. Our average ticket right now is around forty dollars, so that train rides only ten dollars, so that five thousand dollars will help supplement some of that income. Really, it's just gonna cover our costs at that point with the fuel. We have a Big Smoke on the Rail sponsorship that we're supporting, we're very excited to see that come back again. That train ticket is usually about, again, forty dollars. We're gonna do it for only seventeen dollars for the seventeen engine, and that's just to really kind of help fundraise for the event as well. And then we're also working on a beautification project. Oh, I've got typos in there, I'm sorry. So the corridor that the train tracks are on, we have, I hope all of you have noticed that we're cleaning it up. We have new management on the operations side, so we've been trying very hard to get everything cleaned up. The truck will be gone by the end of March. So our board has a mission of really kind of beautifying the area, so my goal is to apply to Explore York's round two and have some wave mining, help us put some millions down, help us clean up the area, just make the area look more presentable. My vision is that it really just is a very welcoming area to our visitors into New Freedom, and they say, "What a beautiful place this is," and we have a mural in the building, and we want to just add to the community. So we're asking for another five thousand for that, just to help us match for the Explore York fund. So I have a few little calendar highlights for this coming year, and I also have the Borough amusement tax report, do you want that? Does anybody want to see it? We're happy to give it out, so. Bob? Did I miss anything?
Nope. You got it.
I'll let you take one and pass it, I'll serve over here. Do you guys have any questions?
So are you essentially operating year-round now?
Um, so.
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, we had two, we took three weekends off in January, two weekends off in February, and one weekend off in March. We start this weekend, we're running every, we're running Saturday, this coming Saturday, we're participating with the five K run, and then we're running for Easter, and then we're running every Saturday in April, and then we're running. So, yeah, non-stop. We'll sub-stops, but yes, feels like non-stop, yes.
With our diesel equipment and our new cars, we're able to run in the colder weather, where with a steam engine, it cannot handle snow and ice. And so traditionally, in the early years of the operation, we only ran, we did not run at all in January, February, March. The last couple of years, we've run limited runs, like we ran the ice sculpture runs for a couple of years. But now it's like one day every weekend, and then we'll get into Saturdays and Sundays come May.
So Ashley, it would be safe to say that what you're actually doing in requesting the fifteen K back is you're actually donating it back into the community?
Yes.
Which does good things for the community, and it helps NCR by boosting their visibility?
Yeah.
So it's really a win-win situation for everybody. I think we need to review it and maybe put on next month's agenda, a motion, or take a motion next month.
Perfect, sounds good to me. Thank you.
Andrew pointed out that, sorry, Andrew pointed out that we should have something in the agenda with the amount of the motion, which as the request stands, would be fifty percent or fifteen thousand dollars, which would represent about half the amusement tax paid.
It's just gonna be, we're not making the motion now, or you're just?
No, he just wants to know what to put in.
There's discussion among council on the request.
As far as the present?
Yeah, it's real. Okay, so yeah, go ahead and put it in, and that, we'll make a motion and vote on it for next week.
It would still be on for, it just needs to be on the agenda for next month because official action.
Yeah, it's a sunshine requirement, right? Thank you.
Thank you. We finally got back the final signage for the part two sign. I know Kim, I don't know if you saw it, I did message it to you, since you're not here.
Can you hear it, Kim?
Hi, Kim, I do have a copy of that that I got from Andrew today.
Okay. So I think we're gonna move forward to getting those, and it's my understanding the Lions Club has reached out to Andrew, because they are working on getting a bench purchase. So the final stages of the project is coming to an end. Okay? Thanks.
Thank you. So anyone have any questions?
I didn't have time to print my notes out, so I just wanted to read them.
I'm sorry?
I didn't have time to print my notes.
Oh, you're fine.
So I just read them off, thank you. Do you need to know my name? Bernadette Reinerberg. So I'm here to comment on the stop and show store at two four North Constitution Avenue.
I'm sorry, could you just give me one second?
Can you turn the microphone on?
Oh, that is working.
Okay.
I'm turning my hearing aids on. Okay.
Sure. Bernadette Reinerberg, I previously reported the initial semi-truck load of boxes, materials different sizes, that took place on October ninth. That took about three hours to unload. And then again, on October nineteenth, twenty-twenty-four, second semi-truck delivery took place. The truck was filled to the brim. It's right outside my window, so I can see it. Boxes upon boxes unloaded. So now I refer to the first time that I ever came for the council, and I was told that it is definitely a retail space. I had questioned because it was an eye doctor, a well-nic supply store, and a jewelry store, whether or not it had a special exception, but I was told it didn't need it because it operated as that before. So that being said, and I also had questioned the square footage of the ratio of the building versus the parking spaces, because they don't have enough parking spaces. Again, I was told that it didn't matter, because they had done it previously. But it brings me to another question, though. The zoning violation that I feel they're in violation of, the zoning ordinance, is the warehouse and distribution. So it has nothing to do with retail. There are vans that pull up, and they're loading these vans, which to me is warehouse and distribution and not retail. It continues to happen ever since October, so we're going into five months now that it's turned into not only retail, residence, now it's, to me, the definition of.
Kim and Dave, can you please mute, just so we don't have any background noise?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just muted.
Okay, so I guess I would like to know what can be done about this new violation that I see. It's obvious that that's what's happening, and I realize, because I did speak with some private investigators on this type of activity, and they told me that it's actually the zoning officer's job to monitor the building. I shouldn't have to do that, I shouldn't have to hire them, though they have done it for other townships in the county when it comes to people staying in a building overnight, that there's no residents zoning there. But now I bring myself to this, I'd like to know it's an ordinance.
Excuse me, what is the specific zoning there? And what would be grandfathered in? I was a retail store, but that includes loading and unloading, that wouldn't be necessarily a violation of that zone? Do you see it as a?
Deliveries to retail stores are not a violation.
The distributing, distribution. So two semi-trucks unloaded boxes upon boxes that are not obviously going into that small retail space, but they're being reloaded back into vans, the same boxes, or a pickup truck. Huge, like the huge boxes that took many people to carry it are loaded into a pickup truck, you know, a few months later. It's, to me, the definition of warehousing and distribution, separate from the retail. It's not a Pepsi-Cola truck pulling in and dropping off, you know, a few cases of sodas or water or what have you. It's semi-truck full of boxes.
I'm gonna, a loss is to how to respond, I mean.
So is something going to be done? I'm told that this should be investigated by the borough. So I'm asking.
I don't think that the borough has the authority to go look into someone, what's in a box.
But the activity of, not people going in the front door and buying things at the retail space, but the activity of unloading boxes and boxes in a semi-truck practically right beside my house. My property line goes right over to the parking lot within a few feet, because I have the empty lot beside the building as well.
I'll just get, I can only give you a, for instance, or an example, if at the rudder store down here, maybe there's two other rudder stores in the area, they may drop off a large quantity of whatever, some product at the rudder store, and then it may be sent back out to the rudder store down the road, the other rudders in Tru's Berry. That would just be part of retail activity. I don't know how I would ever prove or disprove that that's not part of their activity, because I do, I do understand that they have another store, right? So I'm not sure how I would go about as a zoning officer, or how the borough zoning officer figure out what was going on. I mean, that is a normal activity of doing business, would you say? I mean, I, again, I'm in a loss, because that would be a normal activity of business.
I have to just agree with this, it's not retail.
This council outside of myself, according to ordinances, wanted to be reactive instead of proactive, and you had a citizen come here several times, and she's coming again, and she's telling you a violation that she believes is happening, and your stance has always been, the citizen files the complaint, and then it is investigated.
I'm not sure what it's a complaint of. It sounds like it's a complaint of normal activity that a business would do. That's my only statement. I don't know, and it was short of me going and sitting there in their parking lot and trying to find one of these instances you're referring to.
I have pictures, I have a timeline, just like I have a timeline of when they stayed there for the first night, on September twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four. It's almost six months now that they've been living in the back of the store. It's easy to see, because I'm right there. Like I said, my property line goes, I could walk there and stand all night if I wanted to, I could put a deer cam up there or something. My property line goes right there. Did I see bedding unloaded? No, this is an age where you can buy a mattress in a box and have it delivered. I'm told by another state agency that this type of activity, these people tidy up when they know, like a zoning officer's coming to inspect on a supposedly, you know, construction or anything that might be happening there, they tidy up, they're not, and the question is not even.
Would they give an advance notice that Wade was coming? Or did he just stop by and not?
It was a follow-up after a phone conversation when the first two letters went out concerning the violation, so it wasn't a scheduled time.
I have in my notes when I called Labor Day, that the zoning officer was out of the office, and I was read the notes that they had to go back in for inspection after they were going to occupy the back of the building. I was also told by the zoning officer that as long as they don't have personal mail coming there, to me, that was inferring that maybe they could stay there in the back of the building, I don't know. But why he told me that, I don't know. It didn't matter to me if they had personal mail going there or not, but obviously, I guess they're not allowed to have personal mail there.
Okay, it's council's understanding that the zoning officer inspected the building, and there was no evidence that anyone was staying there?
I understand that.
That's the basis that the council is operating on?
Right, and the basis of me coming and staying there, still staying in the back of the building, has really nothing to do with what they found, because it's not how they're living in that building. They live in there however they want, every night after ten o'clock. I don't know how they do it, but I do know that they're doing it.
What's the guidance of solicitor, or the situation that this citizen is enduring?
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like the zoning officer has investigated and had no finding now. The warehousing, distribution, what we could do is we could take a look at that ordinance and see if the actions that you're describing would fall under warehousing and distribution, and if that would be a violation of zoning ordinance, we can definitely do that for you, but we wouldn't be able to do that tonight, but we can take it back in the next meeting.
I understand that.
How often have you seen the distribution?
I can go back through my pictures and tell you, a lot of them are date and time stamped.
I'm just in general, like in a thirty-day period?
A thirty-day period, probably ten. It's, this has been almost five months. October ninth was the first truckload. The second one, you could actually see the back of the truck was filled to the brim with these boxes. March first, four thirty-seven PM, I was outside and looked up and see there's a pickup truck with a box about the size of the center panel of this conference front. Barely, the guy could barely fit it in. That's not a retail, that was, you know, him distributing some rather large.
Do any of these boxes have any identification on them? They say what they are, or they just plain brown?
I would have to get, no, I'd have to get closer, and I don't want to be.
No, I'm not asking you, I'm just, from my pictures or anything like that.
I'd have to look back at some of my pictures.
Are you able, next time one of these big semis come in, are you able to call down to the office and say, "They're here now"?
I am, I will do that.
So these, this material comes in, what about leaving, boxes leaving?
That's what I'm saying, the boxes leave, these vans pull up and they load them up. Sometimes they have to take the seats out of their vans to accommodate all the boxes that they're putting into the vans, and then they'll come back and get their seats.
Approximately, is it equal numbers of deliveries in outgoing, or is it twice as many deliveries or twice as many items or delivery, or trucks going out as coming in?
It was two dates that I've got so far that I documented, October nineteenth and October ninth. And as I stated, they're different than Pepsi-Cola truck, just dropping off a couple pieces of water. This is on the very side of the building where there are hundreds and hundreds of boxes being unloaded. And then, it's not an equal amount, because the small van that comes could never be the same, you know, could never have the capacity.
Bernadette, why don't we do this? We'll, we'll have the solicitor review the ordinance to see if there is any violation to the existing ordinance that we can, that we can look at. The borough manager just gave you his cellphone, so that you could contact him and say, "It's happening now."
That's the best way.
Okay.
But the, you know, I do have to caution, though, that we don't have a warrant to search any boxes, I mean, we can't.
I understand that, I'm not that naive, I do understand that.
I'm just saying.
I appreciate that. Yeah, I do understand a lot of, you know, what's required in order for that to happen. But I do feel as someone who likes the traditional neighborhood, someone who likes New Freedom, someone who talks up New Freedom all the time, someone who is participating in the five K on Saturday, because I love this area. Yeah, I'm doing this as a concerned citizen, because I have children in my home, and they don't seem to respect the fact they've got their bongs in the window and all that, we have to deal with all that.
They have, oh, I heard.
You know? So, yeah, I'm just doing my.
No, I understand what you're saying, and we'll, again, we'll look at the ordinance, we'll see if there's any violation, and if you can contact Andrew whenever you see an instance of this activity, so that we could get there and witness the activity, and maybe determine, I mean, you just casually walk up and say.
Yeah, you can stand in my office and look out the window, I work from home, and I can see it.
The, under the definition of retail store, the wholesale distribution and manufacturing of products is not included, so it does not mean, if it's distribution and wholesale, it does not meet the definition of retail store.
Right, and it's so obvious, that's.
May I make a comment?
Sure.
It's my understanding, I liked your analogy of the rudder stores, but it's my understanding that this gentleman owns over a hundred of these retail stores, and I can see where he might want to rotate stock from one store to another, if one store's kind of, especially the one in New Freedom that we're talking about, you know, if he needs to get rid of some stuff that's nearing a use-by date, and take it out to another store, bring fresh product in. There's a lot of product in that store, I've been in there on several occasions, and I can see where they would bring truck and truck and truck load in and take truck and truck and truck out, so that they have fresh product. And that's, that's the only thing that I might add to the situation under consideration.
Thank you, that's, that's what I'm trying to say, I mean, if it's normal, normal business, and it would be, it's just very, very hard for, you know, but we can review the zoning and see if there is something to that. But it's difficult, I mean, a rudder store that takes product in and out is not wholesale distribution, it's just them moving merchandise from one store to another.
Right, and I can count the number of cars that are in and out there every day, and I can assure you that it's, they're not buying. you that it's, they're not buying, and it's not like product that they need to freshen up and all that. It's not food products, I'm sure, but I know that we don't have the facts yet, but...
I know.
Okay. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Approval minutes for meeting held February 12th, 2024. Make a motion?
Make a motion to be approved for the February 12th, 2024 meeting minutes.
Second.
Discussion? First page, G N L spell. G I N L I E, office announced that the contract offered to... All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pus? Am I right? Aye. Okay. Approval of the treasurer's report pending audit for February of 2024?
Make a motion to be approved, the audit, February 2024, pending audit.
Second.
Second. Got any questions? Did you want to read it? Or did you want to go to yours? You can, if you like.
Just real quick, I know we've been discussing in the past the accounts receivable on the utility side. Just an update for February, there were 51 collection letters sent out to residents as well as 36 postings, property postings for shut-off in the month of February. So, this is, it's a little, little higher than normal, but this is about the amount that gets handled every, every month for just the reoccurring bill. So, did drop a little bit from January to February, and we'll try to keep heading in that, heading, heading in that direction. There was a couple of questions on the treasurer's report, page 14. There was a charge there for Matthew Brothers, and that was based on a couple of different invoices. It actually included four different invoices for that total amount of $1,153.34. There was a question about the, page 17, under BMO Financial, that was utility boxes for the pickup truck. Page 22, the purchase of the valve machine and that, that was approved back last year. We just finally took delivery of that piece of equipment.
Anything else?
On the last page. Community center cleaning from 1/25 to 2/8, two weeks. Is that really $1,000 for two weeks? 1/25 to 2/8?
Um, no, I don't think that timeframe is right, but I can pull that invoice and get you a copy of that breakdown.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Pus? Am I right? Aye. Okay. Moving to unfinished business, you just got the sign regulation draft ordinance. That should be reviewed and put on the agenda for next month to, for above.
Yeah, just as a follow-up, this, the, this document contains the revisions as noted from York County Planning Commission following their initial review. So, we've incorporated those changes. This is the updated, I guess, version 2.0 for council's review. So, this is just to be placed on, on the agenda for the upcoming meetings and gives you a chance to review ahead of April's meeting.
Then we should just give a pass at our first meeting if we agree or make whatever changes.
It would have to, you'd have to authorize that at April's meeting, then you'd have to, it's a zoning change at that public hearing in May during the council meeting regarding those changes. So, there's a couple of steps that have to occur to that.
Okay. Moving forward. Update on store buyer channel on York Constitution?
Fortunately, don't really have any positive update. The last notification we received was back on February 27th from Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection. They are requesting an updated letter from Fish and Wildlife in regards to the PNDI report. So, we take a couple of steps forward, a couple of steps back every month with that project.
Are we tracking costs on this?
It's recorded in QuickBooks, sure.
Volunteer service credit resolution?
Now, this was included on the agenda after last month's discussion regarding amending some of the points that are earned per occurrence by fire or EMS volunteers. So, this is the original resolution that's still in effect that breaks down the matrix for assigning points and for the volunteers earning those points. And I believe what the feedback that we've received from the fire company and EMS is that the biggest downfall or lack of points being able to be earned relates to fundraising and public education activities. For those volunteers that are just involved with fundraising, public education, and outreach, it's difficult for them to get to that 200-point threshold throughout the years.
Even though they're putting a lot of hours in?
Even though they're putting a lot of hours in, yeah. Again, this is just in, in front of you this evening. You can take it until the next meeting because really you have until the end of the year to implement the change. That would be retroactive for the entire year.
You don't have their recommended changes in here, though?
No, this is just what's in place at this point. Yeah. It's just a matter of evaluating compared to how an active firefighter might be able to earn points compared to an active volunteer involved in fundraising and outreach efforts.
Will there be anything wrong if I sent out what their request is, what their recommendation is? Basically, it matches Shrewsbury Borough's allocation for volunteers. Should that be okay with everybody? I'll send out to you an email so you have it to compare to this and see where the changes are. Okay. New business, consider approval of the high bid in the amount of $14,000 for the sale of the 2006 Ford F-350.
Need motion, correct?
Yes, please.
Make motion to be approved, the bid for $14,000 for the F-350.
I'll second that.
Motion in a second. There's a discussion?
Just one quick question. There was two bids on here for $14,000, one listed as a proxy. What's, what's the difference? Why does it go to one over the other?
I assume they had entered that bid.
The first one to enter that or the other?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, if you look, they were going back and forth for a while there. And we, just so you know, we started this at $500. It's indicated at the top there. Set the reserve price at $5,000. Internally, we were hoping for $10,000. The blue book value is a little over $11,000, so...
Is that right?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, you said you, you listed the, the reserve at 10?
Five.
Five, okay.
Yeah.
I was gonna say it says five. I'm sorry, I misheard you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pus? Am I right? Aye. Consider hiring an appointment of recreation director for Southern York County Regional Recreation Commission. Do you want to give an update on whatever it is or where we are?
Sure, yeah. The appointed representatives from Shrewsbury Township, New Freedom Borough, as well as the representative from D C N R have conducted the first round of interviews and finalizing down to the candidates and have extended an offer to a select individual, but at this time we have not received a response. So, I think we would need to table this until April's meeting.
Okay. I'm gonna do a motion to table it. Can we just table until April?
Who are the two representatives for New Freedom?
It was President Bobby and myself.
On the Shrewsbury side, it was our property, Jim Todd. And then there was representative from D C E D that...
D C.
D C N R, I'm sorry. Any questions? Any administrative reports? Specifically?
I don't have anything, but we will definitely look at that warehousing and distribution language in the zoning ordinance, and we'll have something for you at the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Managers' report?
Everybody has a copy of the February 2024 managers' report in their packet. If there's any questions on that, let me know. Additionally, at the last meeting, Councilman Ross requested additional information regarding grants and where they are in that process. So, following the managers' report, there is a stacked bar graph as well as a table summarizing the grants since 2021. So, the amounts are in, amounts of 1,000, and we broke down by applied, awarded, and funded. Funded just means we've accepted the dollars and allocated them. So, I think between, hopefully, if there's questions, I can alter this, but hopefully between the graph and the table, it explains where we're at in the process with the grants, how many are outstanding, what's been awarded and spent. Thank you.
I wanted to point out on the managers' report that the MyRec software came up repeatedly in the interview process with the rec directors, that it's pretty much what they use. There were two different ones. They're both, both, both basically the same software and have the same, so, but all the candidates, especially the ones we keyed in on, all understood this particular software package. So, it was a good choice.
Will you be receiving a copy of the 23 proportionate share report for the wastewater treatment facility?
I can send that out.
Thank you.
Is that okay electronically? Would you like to?
I have a copy here. I just put the...
Okay.
I want to point out too on the, on the grant reports that we had, there was some Facebook comments made about grants and, I mean, just for the record and so that everyone realizes, this is a huge benefit to New Freedom Borough taxpayers. You know, the money is not free. It's tax dollar money, but it's going to go to some municipality. Somebody's going to take the money and use it for their project, and the fact that we use it for our project is a great benefit to the New Freedom taxpayer, actually to the tune of, you know, for the wastewater treatment plant grant as an example, we save about $250 per household on, by getting this $1.14 million grant. So, grants are definitely important to our budgeting and to our financial health.
I really have nothing to report unless you need me to do anything with regard to the, to the upcoming resolution that you discussed for points accumulation. I will be at their meeting, hopefully. Thursday, I'll be feeling a little bit better, but I don't know if there's anything that council would like me to pass along or request.
I actually have all the information. I worked with Lisa Dukes on the software to put together the, the qualification for the firefighters. So, Lisa gave me what Shrewsbury has and what they're requesting. So, I will send that out to everybody, including you, so that you can see the difference between what we have currently and what they're requesting.
Okay, very good, because I remember when we went through this, where there was a lot of back and forth with council, we finally came up with a resolution. I do think that that needs to be updated occasionally for our service providers, both P M Act and Fire. So, I thank you. That's all I have before I head off into that. Thank you.
All right. All better.
Councilman Rice Dorf texted me and said that he got caught off by mistake when he was trying to mute. So, it's not...
I, when, yeah, I see that there's only one on the call, so I'll get it back here.
Okay.
Hey, Dave, we got you back here.
Yes, sir. I hung up by mistake. I was trying to unmute. I'm gonna...
All right, hold on, let me get the conference back in.
Okay.
Okay. I'm sorry. Are both of you there now?
I'm here.
Would it be worth having some kind of conversation with Shrewsbury about just joining it together instead of them doing one and then back and forth?
Well, this, this will accomplish that.
But what if they change it in the future? I'm saying, what if they were tied together?
I don't think you could do that because it's, it's...
Is that too tricky? I know they're different municipalities.
Yeah, it's a resolution for each one, so if one of their future councils decided wanted to tweak something or change something, you know, they're not really obligated to tell us, so...
Okay.
I think we'll, we'll leave it up to Rose to tell us if something changes and they need something.
I just want to make sure that we're staying as competitive or even more so than somebody else to make sure that they get the credits that they deserve and that's...
Yeah, thank you. Okay. Southern regional police department?
Not a whole lot. Chief kind of went over when they have separate evidence such as phones, batteries, so forth, it's a fire hazard. They placed all those in a safe that's fireproof. They also purchased a Class D fire extinguisher because their body cams and so forth are on chargers. If those chargers don't shut off when they're 100% charged, it could, it's a fire. There was no activity report. They're working to get that done. There were a lot of officers just out sick, various reasons, along with that AT&amp;T blackout messed up. All the numbers were within tolerance. 911 is looking to improve the phone system for any future outages. They thought it was them. They were unplugging things. They didn't realize it was a nationwide situation. They thought it was them. They were unplugging things. They didn't realize it was a nationwide situation. Child abuse reports are up. Not all are valid, but it is up. Engelbert, um, insurance pension, they have all of the actuary info and hopefully we'll have a report report soon. I G A reaches completion. Mike Sharkey should have sent it over, a redline version, along with an executive summary. So that should have been done after the police commission meeting, um, at the beginning of this month. And all members of all borough councils and and so forth are um going to be asked to attend either the March nineteenth meeting here or the April second meeting in Shrewsbury to ask any questions, question and answer time, go over it. So I encourage you all to be here March nineteenth.
Is it possible for the chief to email that activity report when it's done?
It'll come to Andrew.
Yeah, yeah.
Just make a copy and put it in my mailbox.
Yep, I can do that.
Please.
Mayor report for warehouse?
Andrew, you, maybe you don't because it, you know, it's not something you probably get involved with. But on on the warehouses report under two under Saint John of the Baptist Church, it's a preparation and next that's summary to applicable to address current erosion issues. Where where is the, is it either the holding pond or down the bank?
Yep. Yeah, yeah, we've, um, this is going, I would say, it's been a couple of months now. It goes back into the fall of twenty three where they're looking at adding in additional parking.
Yeah, right.
Capes faces in the front.
Right.
And we asked them to address some stormwater concerns that we have with that retention pond and kind of updating that to fix that while the issue with the additional purpose is addressed elsewhere. But because of the amount of runoff that that's creating onto Constitution Avenue and into those basins, they have some potential upgrades to that, to fix that.
That's a Baptist church.
Is that what? It is.
It says the Baptist church. That's a Catholic church.
It's it is called Saint John Baptist.
That's the name, Saint John Baptist.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
It's definitely a Catholic church.
Yeah.
That's the one with cemetery right next to Constitution?
Yes.
Yeah, it is.
That's actually the old church, the newer churches.
Yeah, they have two two cemetery sections. One is right on Constitution, the other one is a little bit further, what do you call it, under under the church, the new church?
Right.
Yeah. Two sections.
Any other comments? Any errands today? Water suspect? Any comments?
I suppose they could perform for the month of December in February for the on the water sampling?
Oh, that's supposed to say February.
February.
Sorry.
Tony, did did D E P or uh D P A notify the borough about this PF A S sampling?
Yeah, we did uh, we did our first sampling here on the PFOS uh in Jan- January? In January, yes. And that's that's going, that's D that's D E P, and we just did two years with uh D P A.
Okay.
So they're doing their sampling, so we're, I think we're done with that. They're, I don't know why we had to do one with one and one with the other, but uh I think we're done with the uh the D P A sampling. So now D E P's doing sampling. I just got the results back on the second sampling that was done for for E P A this past month. It was done back in the spring of last year.
Wow.
That's how long it's taken them to get sample results.
These results are in parts per trillion.
Right.
Used to be results for water milligrams per meter, parts per million. Then it was, now we're in the two items, parts per billion, now we're in it stuff, parts per trillion. It's it's equivalent to, uh, the comparison is equivalent to a drop of water being twenty six size swimming pool. That's what part per trillion is like.
Wastewater Treatment Plant Report? I'm going to point out that the new supplier uh for the ferric chloride is saving eighteen thousand dollars a year. That was a dead line. Some building went on spring. Got any voicemail?
I just want to provide an update on the property that's listed there. As it's noted there, we did send an additional violation notice um for a refrigerator on the property. And property maintenance code says that if there is a refrigerator on the property, the door has to be removed, um, so anybody, children or anybody else can't get in and have the door closed behind that latch. That was addressed. We made other multiple attempts to contact the property owner concerning the outstanding quality of life citations as well as status updates, and we were not successful in any of those attempts. So we have since sent additional letters for an accessory dwelling unit on the property as well as filed for civil complaints for unpaid quality of life citations. So it's kind of jumping into March with that report there, but just wanted to provide an update.
Andrew, what is the total of their fines for quality of life? Because I know each time, I think it goes, it increases.
Yeah, so it would have been uh twenty five, fifty, one hundred, five hundred, so six hundred and seventy five dollars. The civil complaint, each one of those was filed at five hundred dollars. So on top of the six hundred and seventy five dollars, you're looking at an additional two thousand dollars in fines.
Okay, thank you.
I...
You get a good appreciation for if you go down and want, take a walk down the rail trail, look at it from the back, and maybe just like, how are they ever going to clean it up?
And unfortunately, I don't think that filing the citations is going to help the situation, but um when we cease communication, we have no other option.
At what point can we file for condemnation?
The property maintenance code allows the agency, in this case, the borough, to go in and remove the violation. Uh, however, in this case, you're dealing with, you're dealing with people's belongings. So I don't know that. And...
Do you have any idea what's on your tarp covering the door?
More...
More...
Communication is saying.
Is the person out of the camper?
Not, no, the the violation letter was uh sent at the beginning of March, so that time period hasn't popped yet. But we have other evidence that strengthens that letter being sent that they're living in that as well as the house, which would qualify as additional.
She announced it at Bonkies.
I'm sorry.
She announced she lives in there at Bonkies.
Oh.
I think there's electric wires going to that, but um...
Oh, yeah, there's there's electric.
Because I mean, when I went past the other day heading towards Southern Valleys, I noticed, thought I saw that. That's a dead giveaway.
I know, following the the last meeting, we attempted to make contact to help out, and that was unsuccessful.
Did they communicate at all after that?
Nope.
What's chances of sending a registered letter discussing condemnation? Basically threatening condemnation unless they and and give them some amount of time to take care of it?
Uh, we can, we would need to wait uh until the hearing is scheduled.
Civil complaints?
Could I make a suggestion that when we file civil complaints, copies of those are sent out to all members and myself? It'd be nice to know, you know, what's the what the complaint reads?
I I'd be more uh inclined there to provide a summary of those, considering those are confidential documents until the hearing is is held.
Okay, well then, can we be notified when the hearing will uh be taking place?
Absolutely.
Okay, I think that would be important. Thanks.
All right, I would, I'd, just to strengthen this a little bit, I would like to get a consensus. I don't know, it should be in the form of a motion, but a consensus from council that we move forward with this in all haste, using every method that we can possibly. I know you're doing what you can, but I mean...
The goal was to work with the property owner, but we're past that point.
Yeah, I think that's failed.
Yes.
When was the last communication that you had? Approximately approximately?
January.
We went all of February, and February was a long month with the week here and...
An extra day.
Extra day, yep. Um, and now we're almost two weeks into March.
Correct.
You know, we'll have a problem making a motion, but it sounds like there's already a couple of things in in play here already.
I'm not sure exactly what the motion is.
Yeah, I agree, okay. I mean, just the location, however it is.
I think the council decided to be uh reactive. When there is a violation, you state it, it's going to go to the fullest extent. So I think that's already been established.
Any other questions? Recreation minutes?
Sorry?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Uh, subdivision and land development report?
On the new haven, I see revised plan. Is there anything noted?
No, the the revised plan just addressed the developer and York County Planning Commission comments. I'm sorry, it addressed our engineer and York County Planning Commission comments. So we did have a follow-up meeting back on February twenty first and went through those comments and we're waiting resubmission at this point. Following that meeting, as well as at the leave, there is a staff meeting for Shrewsbury Township to review the plan on April second, I believe. Um, so again, as we've stated, that plan needs to be signed off on by Shrewsbury Township before we feel the need to bring it in front of our planning commission um and borough council. Not full approval, just that it went through their process as well.
So for the other side of the street, the development, he's asked Shrewsbury Township, told them what he was going to do to the other side?
Uh, no, this is just for, the the portion in Shrewsbury Township relates to stormwater improvements as well as an access road. And they just want to make sure that they have a chance to sign off and fully review the plan.
Shrewsbury Township is on both sides of the road, correct?
Yes.
But these lots are mostly on our side of the road.
They all are on our, except, yeah, except the stormwater uh lot is, the majority of that is in Shrewsbury Township.
Is there any potential dwellings in Shrewsbury Township with this?
No. All thirty four, yeah, this is thirty seven lot. It's a thirty seven lot subdivision, thirty four units. The other lots are for stormwater.
In various places throughout this proposed development?
Correct.
Thirty three, four total.
Also in our packet, there's a York County Boroughs Association meeting on March twenty eighth. There's a um signup and registration sheet. Yeah, there was an invite tonight, right? Ryan?
Okay. Just a few quick follow-ups um from the from the meeting. They had asked about the application process for the recreation director. Uh, that was all addressed earlier in the meeting tonight. Uh, so thank you for the update. Indoor tennis program was a very big success. They ended that program Sunday, March tenth. That program had forty nine participants total. Uh, pickleball had forty five uh players signed up with the new all mine program in March. Uh, there was some questions about the use of the A E D. Uh, Andrew uh sent out an email this afternoon about a video on how to use the A E D machine located at the community center, so thank you for that. It was also mentioned at the meeting that the new cleaning person was doing a great job, and they really appreciated of the work that was being done to keep the community center clean. Um, we had mentioned indoor uh golf program. Uh, that was tabled until, they had the fall on here, and I thought they said, I thought they said spring or summer. Uh, the individual was, actually, no, it was the fall. Um, the individual was having some health concerns, and they get into their summer program, so this is going to push it out to the fall. Uh, Mutual Fun is a band. Uh, they've been contracted for eight twenty-four for the concert on that date. That'll be in the park. And that is going to be the only concert this summer as of right now. Uh, Veterans Day, they received a three hundred dollar donation from PNC Bank, uh, which will be donated to the BFW. And Parks, uh, the next feasibility study meeting will be on March nineteenth. Uh, there was a question about whether that was open to the public or not, and that is, is not because it is not a borough committee. Uh, this is just a committee of community members and community stakeholders. That, uh, but again, that meeting will take part, take place on March nineteenth. And I hope to have some more information on results of that at our next council meeting. So any other questions?
On committees, uh, if there's really anything for business development, uh, we talked about the EMS, um, call sheet and fire call sheet. I think that was the only thing on that. Did you have, I'm hesitant, hesitant to ask because it might start coughing. Did you have anything else on EMS funding and health and safety, Mr. Rare?
Yeah, just that, just that they are very grateful for, um, our assistance with all, all their, their matters. Um, leaving the Lions Club in our last meeting, they were a little confused about how EMS and fire are one company under one E I N number, but that contributions made to Rose Fire Company do not include the EMS. So I believe that they are splitting their donation between Rose Fire and Rose EMS. And I think that's an important thing for all, all our assistance that comes along to realize that they are two separate entities. And the fact that our EMS side really can't do fundraising, uh, because they're working shifts and there's just no way they can go out and do a barbecue or something like that. And a call comes in, which we're averaging about five or ten a day now. Um, they, they just can't fundraise. So they still need assistance. Uh, they're, they are putting the cast from the old, um, the old ambulance onto the new chassis. And, uh, I think, uh, the Lions has, is dedicating their contribution to the new chase truck. And I know that was a stipulation, I think with Shrewsbury Township, that, uh, their donation also goes towards supporting the chase truck. So that's, that's pretty much all I have for EMS and fire. Those guys are doing, well, both sides are doing a fantastic job.
Thank you.
Just, just one thing quick. I, I didn't point it out during the manager's report, but we did process those volunteer service credits for twenty-twenty-three and paid out over six thousand dollars to volunteers for their twenty-twenty-three municipal real estate tax. And that's in addition to their ability to claim up to five hundred dollar credit on their earned income tax. So I think that change was very beneficial and, uh, shows a good amount of appreciation to those volunteers.
And everybody worked very hard to, to get it to that, to that point because I never would have thought that the, uh, the school board would have approved that, but I'm very thankful that they did. So we're, and we had a lot of help from, uh, from our representatives, um, in York to make sure that this got through. And I would just like to say on behalf of those organizations, uh, they're very appreciative.
Thank you. Personnel, we already kind of already be on the personnel item. Do you want to talk about Garth retiring?
But we can, you can discuss that.
Okay. Has the rental housing and occupancy committee met yet?
We, we have not. Sorry to say.
Yeah. Um, after, I've, I've spoken to some, to some state reps and really the, uh, our current rental ordinance requiring people to register, uh, renters in their properties. If we enforce that and with the state mandated, uh, laws that are already in effect and on the books, I'm not really sure that we need to have a separate rental housing occupancy ordinance. But I would really like it if the committee came back and, and at least met and reviewed to see if there is a reason to have one and what the verbiage should be. So I, I really, I really need that to happen for April. So that can be...
All right, I'll, I'll make sure that that happens. And I really think at this point, the only thing we're, the necessity that we're looking at is that they follow the guidelines that are already in our current ordinance. And I would like to see personally that, uh, anytime a, a renter, uh, leaves, that we have the ability to inspect. And that way, we can go in, make sure that they're, uh, they have fire extinguishers, that they have smoke alarms and just the basic things that are required for every landlord to provide to the renters. I think those are the most important things for us to consider.
Yeah, and I, I think that's great. And I think that's what your committee needs to come back and tell council what you recommend.
We will, we will do that and have a report in April.
I appreciate it. Community center cleaning, we've already talked about that. Is there anything else? And the chorus bond is the only thing we have.
Well, I do have one more thing about the community center cleaning. The rec did ask if we could, um, consider once again the use of some kind of a floor sweeping, scrubbing, uh, machine as we've discussed before. Rec is just asking if we could reconsider that.
Is there a reason why when they indicated that it's been cleaned?
Passing you along.
I'm wondering if, uh... I might make it slow.
I tend to doubt me, but I think we need to prove to them that it's something, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. I'm sorry.
I just said that dog's already hunted. Already been over that.
Okay. Go ahead, Kim.
I, I think that we need to prove to rec and, uh, pickleball tenants, all those, that this will be a consistent policy with, uh, with cleaning. They were very well pleased with, with how the floors look. I think they just want to make sure that that's a consistent, um, approach to, uh, the, the cleaning up there.
Time, time will tell, I'm sure. Any additional public comment?
I do have one. On the, the savvy citizen, when we got the regional comprehensive plan survey, I, I think it was very misleading. It, it talks about if we want a rector, obviously that ship has already sailed. And I think it kind of talks about that you all, elected officials, have the right to stop the housing building and using of the farmland, which again is not really, you don't have to vote on that. I just found it very misleading.
Yeah, the only thing that we really have in our power to do is to make sure that the zoning is adhered to. So, yeah, I do appreciate that.
And I know nobody there had anything to do with putting it out or putting it together, but I just found it very misleading to the citizens. That's all.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion.
Please, your second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
For those, my ladies and gentlemen. Feel better, guys.